Mr. De Nocolo, please continue with your presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wish to submit another second photo. We'll have to mark these, Mr. Chairman, which shows the buffer area.
The first photo, you want that marked in some way?
The first photo you can mark as plaintiff's photo one for this evening's hearing.
Applicant, you mean.
Applicants.
Hopefully that wasn't a Freudian slip.
And the second one you can mark applicant's photo two. It shows the type of undergrowth in the buffer, which is very sparse, and a dwelling clearly can be seen through the foliage. So what the applicant is proposing, and I know the planning staff is quick to recommend denial. Gasoline filling stations today, you do not see them developed without a convenience store. That is the way gasoline filling stations develop today. That is the marketing of gasoline fillings stations. They do not have bay repairs. WSI zone, and in particular Jericho Turnpike, has been developed with those types of automotive uses. The mere fact that you have a convenience store as part of the marketing for a gasoline filling station only means that the 21st century is here for the gasoline industry, and unfortunately, the town of Smithtown is not. Because you will not see a gasoline filling station developed without a convenience store, period. So the applicant is proposing to remove a 3,500-square-foot repair bay building, the big gray building, which, by the way, we cleaned up very nicely. My client repaved the property, replanted the property, has flowers around the property. It's night and day from what it was. And I am sure this board is familiar what it all looked like. I have photographs which shows a blighted building, a blighted area with no landscaping, a canopy sitting on Jericho Turnpike. Fortunately, there are people who are willing to make investment in this town, and this project is going to cost probably in excess of $2.5 million. And it's going to generate real estate taxes, $35,000 to $45,000 for the town. This is the planting that occurred in the buffer zone. Whether or not the planning department actually went out and looked at it, and I don't mean to be critical, but they're quick to recommend denial and leave a blighted property. That is not good planning. This is Jericho Turnpike. There are 2,000 cars an hour that pass this location. It is a very big location, a very busy location. Across the street, you have the Macy Shopping Center. You have the muffler operation. You have a bowling alley. You have a shopping center. You have the sump to the west. Then you have the Rosin Savings Bank. You have the Comac Motor Inn. You have the White Castle Restaurant. This is not pristine area on Jericho Turnpike, and the applicant will do everything in its power to plant, to create a screen, so those three dwellings do not, well, will have certainly a lot better screening than they have now. The applicant proposes two. This is the site as it presently exists. You have 3,500-square-foot building that is presently vacant. That can be taken down, and landscaping can be increased at this area. Take the mic out and hold it. Take the mic out and hold it. So you have the 3,500-square-foot building that can be removed, demolished, and a 1,231-square-foot store, convenience store, installed at this location. Is it in the buffer? Sure. I think we can pull it forward another maybe, right now, there's 25 feet. We could probably pull it forward, I'm going to say roughly another five feet. So there would be 30 feet at the closest point. And as you can see, it angles down and gets wider, the buffer would increase. And it would only be, the intrusion would only be for the length of that building, which is approximately 50 feet, which would in turn, that building actually grants a, creates a greater sound attenuation barrier from the traffic on Jericho Turnpike for these neighbors. This is a building that has absolutely no activity behind it. The building proposed to be constructed is this style of building. This is the rear of the building. Nothing, nothing but a wall. It can be beige, it can be whatever color you think blends with the foliage. This is the side of the building. Absolutely nothing. There are electronic doors, or doors for electronic panels on the side, but there is absolutely no activity behind this building. So if you have, and the plan is up there, if you have a building that creates a further barrier from the noise of Jericho Turnpike, not from the noise of the operation. People come in, get their gas, and they leave. The canopy would be reoriented, so instead of it being down on Jericho Turnpike, about five or six feet from the, I think it's seven feet actually, from the property line, you now have a canopy that's realigned as indicated on the screen with cars that come in and go out. That's a right turn in and right turn out. The, it shows in and out, but the applicant is willing to make a right turn in and then a right turn out. So that, and there can be no left-hand turns into this location because there is a concrete barrier across the front or in the middle of Jericho Turnpike, separating the lanes of Jericho Turnpike, which was testified to by the traffic expert. So you have, you have a beautiful building. You have the property realigned. The car wash next door, this property, this car wash goes right back to the property line. This applicant is going to plant, and has planted 132 trees as a sign of good faith. And the planning staff says, "Well, that's not enough. You didn't do what we wanted." Their staff looked at it. Their staff approved it. And on June 6th, and I have the memo from the planning staff. So you, if in fact the recommendation of this board is for approval, and we can pull this vote, we will plant more evergreens. We will plant some deciduous trees if you want, even though there are deciduous trees along the, it's actually along the property line. And they're only green from May to October, from November to April. You can see right through it. And you can see the photos. So with all due respects.
I could interrupt you, and you can continue if you'd like.
Yes, Mr. DiManno.
I think you're aware that homeowners have objected to the fact that their homes behind the property are now exposed. And I don't know if you've visited the site before construction. I certainly did visit the site before construction when it was first coming up. There was sizable growth. Unless I'm misunderstanding what you provided, you're talking about things that are a maximum height of six to seven feet, where the thing, the growth that was there before was substantially greater. Before you go on, what I'd like to hear is what we're going to do to buffer the rear of this property from those homes, which are now exposed and no longer have the benefit of taller growth?
Those six trees, Mr. DiManno, did not open up or expose those homes. Those six trees and two limbs were taken down because they were damaged and dead.
That's not so. That's not so. I was to that site five times. The first time I was there was at the end of March, I believe it was the third, it was the last Monday of March. And I dare say that in the wintertime, they had greater screening than they do right now today.
These Leyland cypress will grow three feet a year.
Those trees were not damaged. I saw them, and I was there. I saw the cut limbs on the ground, and those trees were alive. Now, I have to compliment you because back in March, you gave a very professional and polished presentation. Now unfortunately, your clients did not live up to what you stated. And some of the facts that you stated here tonight. Now Alex, can you pull up on this aerial that says subject site? And zoom in as much as you can on the subject site. Now this looks like it was taken during the wintertime, similar to when I was there in March. These trees, if you could bring it down a little bit. These trees here are gone. These are the trees that you say were dead and damaged by Sandy. Now they, the trees are bare, but they are gone. Over here is this sod that you laid down, which is at a lower elevation than the parking area or the asphalted area. So for you to turn around and say that you've actually improved this and there's greater screening, that is not the case.
Well, I respectfully disagree with you.
I was there. I, you know, I could see.
I look, I don't know. Listen, people maybe see different things. What I'm saying is that in the wintertime, there was very little screening there.
There was more screening then than there is now. You're asking me to believe you and not my own eyes.
Well, if you know a Leyland cypress, they will grow three feet a year, and they will provide a much greater screening than has previously existed. So I don't know that the landscaping is the terrible issue here. It seems to be that maybe.
I've been in these people's backyards, and you could see the lighting. You have a direct line of sight to the new lighting that you put in.
Well, that lighting has been adjusted, as I am advised by your planning staff, and they were satisfied with the way it was adjusted.
I was there. I spoke to a fellow by the name of Chris Honor, who says, "We don't have to do a buffer." He, I believe he works for you gentlemen.
Well, that I don't, we have to do a buffer.
The question remains, how are we going to buffer these homeowners consistent with what we anticipated was going to be done in contrast to what has been done?
If you need more, if you, if, now, this is what was submitted, Mr. DiManno. This is what was submitted, and this is what was approved, and this is what my client did, okay? So the planning staff looked at it, said, "Yeah, that's a good plan, do it." But then they said, "Well, could you," they wanted one Eastern pine every whatever. And that, and the plan was modified in that respect afterwards reviewed. And we did that. Now, if the planning board or the planning staff wants more plantings, more trees, my client will do it. We will do it. This, we did what we submitted, and we did what was approved. Now, we'll do more. You want more? Tell us how much more you want. We will put them in. That's not a problem. We would simply like to have this type of setup because it just operates better on the site for ingress and egress on and off the site. And it is, and the intrusion into the buffer is really minimal because you're still going to have 50 feet for the entire, let's say, the property is 224 feet wide. You're only taking 50 feet out of that buffer area, not to the back, but maybe you're going to have a, let's say, a 30-foot setback at this closest point. And then it gets wider as it goes further east. It's up to as much as 65 feet. So these homes will have, it's a 50-foot buffer. We'll plant more trees. On this side, it will go from, so, whatever it is, 50 from 223. The balance of the area will all have, will have a buffer. And if more trees are requested, we will put them in. And if we are told what type, if you want deciduous trees, we will plant them. If you want a different type of pine, we'll plant them. This is the plan that was submitted, was on the screen before, and that's what the applicant did. And we have, I have an email, June 6th, approving it. So, I mean, we did what we were told to do. Now, we showed good faith. We didn't wait to come back. We did it, one, two, we put them in. That's a, that's a big cost. Man spent over $44,000. And that's not to say that if you want more, we will do more. We think by getting rid of this 3,500-square-foot repair bay, five bay building, that will, that will create more landscape area, and you'll only have a 1,231-square-foot building on the property. The canopy will be off of Jericho Turnpike, will be parallel with Jericho Turnpike, and will have a much greater appearance. Now, if you've seen the place, I think it's so much neater, so much cleaner. So I respectfully request that, I think the applicant has been, has certainly shown good faith, made every attempt, submitted a plan, did what they were supposed to do, following your determination of May 21st. And if you want more, we'll put in more. You know, there's not much more we can say.
Before you do that, Mr. De Nocolo, I just have a couple of questions. Mr. De Nocolo, you handed us Exhibit Two, which is a photograph.
Yes, correct.
First of all, do you know the date of this photograph?
It was, it's not that old, no, I don't. But I can find out, and I will advise you.
2014?
Yes.
Maybe in the spring of 2014?
March, April of 2014.
Okay. Now also, behind the, behind the subject property, directly behind it, are three homes.
Correct. That is correct.
Which of those three homes is pictured in this photograph? Is this the middle one, the left one, or the right one?
I think it may be the middle one, but don't hold me to it.
Any other questions about this? Now also, one other thing, is you mentioned the existing building, which your client.
The 3,500-square-foot?
3,500-square-foot building that's going to be taken down.
Correct.
Is there any reason why that hasn't been done yet, if it's going to be done, since they did all these other improvements?
Oh, well, I mean, if we're not going to, if we're not going to have an approval, we're not going to take the building down. I mean, that, why would my client spend all that money to take down a building until he has an approval?
Okay, so you're waiting, it's not definitely going down. It's going down if you get the approval for this.
If we get an approval, it will definitely be removed.
Okay. Now, it's my recollection that, I think it was May 21st, we were here, and the matter was here before us in March before that? Okay. And after the March hearing, there were trees that were taken down by the applicant on the property while the matter was still pending before this board. Is that correct?
That's correct.
That's correct, yeah.
And then on May 21st, the board adopted a resolution that before this board would proceed any further, the tree landscaping and tree planting plan would have to be submitted to the planning department. And was that supposed to be submitted to the planning board as well?
It's supposed to be submitted to the planning board. That's the resolution.
Have we received it yet?
No.
We submitted to the planning department as agent that acts on behalf of the planning board, Mr. Chairman, and it was reviewed by two members of the planning staff and approved.
Well, we're going to get to that in a minute. I'm just saying that we passed a resolution on May 21st after the trees were started to be knocked down while the matter was still pending before us, that before anything could go forward, we would need to see the proposed plan. And it's now August 13th, and I'm not blaming anybody.
No, no, no. Mr. Wallach wrote to us.
Excuse me, excuse me. It's now August 13th, and I'm not blaming anybody, but I don't believe any of the planning board has seen that plan.
Mr. Wallach was supposed to submit it to you.
Excuse me, has anybody seen that plan?
No.
Okay. So like I said, I'm not blaming anybody. I'm just saying that on May 21st, we passed a resolution.
That is correct.
We were supposed to see, we were supposed to see a proposed planting plan, and we have not, as of now, seen it. Now, you say that you submitted a plan to the planning department.
That's correct.
And you say that the planning department approved your plan.
Correct.
And then you have done what they've approved.
Correct.
Mr. De Nocolo, can you please address that for us?
Okay. There are two separate actions that are occurring here that we are considering. One, there is a zone change matter which is pending before this board, which is the subject of building a convenience sales store on this particular property. And that was the application that was before this board, and that's what we have been responding to. What occurred after the public hearing was the applicant submitted a request to the building department to replace the tanks on that particular site. And in the replacing of the tanks with a permit, a legal permit from the building department, the applicant did all of the modifications that this board is familiar with. That is, they cut down the trees, they entered the buffer, and whatever else they did on this particular site. The applicant was cited for a tree, a violation of the town's tree preservation ordinance with regard to this, and that matter is currently, has not been completed. The, when you have a tree preservation plan, or, excuse me, when you have a violation of the tree preservation plan, in order to get your CEO, the applicant is required to submit a remedial plan, that is for the violation of the tree preservation plan. The plan was submitted to the town attorney, who submitted it to Peter Hans on my staff, to review the violation, the satisfaction for the violation. Peter Hans responded to the satisfaction of the violation because the violation of the tree, the violation that occurred, not the request by this board. The board requested that this plan be submitted to it. In the letter that Alex submitted to the applicant states that this would be given to the board for your review. What was submitted to the town attorney was the satisfaction of a, what would be sufficient number of trees to be replanted on the site to satisfy the violation of the tree preservation law. I know this is sounding too different, like there's two different things occurring, but keep in mind.
Well, there are two different things occurring.
That's right. The applicant did take action on this site, and the town was trying to, the town attorney focused in on the permitted hand for the removal of, or replacement of the gas tanks. We've maintained, and from the beginning, that we did not complete the process that this board had requested, which is to submit a proposal before us, and that would be submitted to this board. Two other points I would like to make that are on the record, and I have to respond respectfully to Gene. He said a couple of things here, and I would like to emphasize this. The implication is, is that we're not joining the 21st century with regard to gas stations. One is, if the applicant, or the attorney has, Gene has submitted several applications before this board, one of which we endorsed on Kings Park Road, which is the head gas station, one of which I opposed, but this board and the town board disagreed with me on Hartnett Road. And then finally, on this one, I agreed with the applicant that this would, if you recall my memo, I agreed that this was going to be a good site. We disagreed on the site design specifically on the buffer. And that's, and I believe the board adjourned this particular matter to review if my position was correct. And the applicant's attorney was making a case to, for that building that was in the buffer. That was the reason for the adjournment. This board and the planning department were, was in support of the concept, not necessarily the design. What is the subject of this particular meeting, again, is whether or not there is sufficient buffer on this particular site. That is the only issue that we think is relevant. If we can't provide, and this is what the planning department believes, that the board is also supportive of. If we cannot provide a sufficient buffer for the residents of this particular site that this board feels is adequate, then we are going to recommend.
But he says that he's willing to do more.
Well, we asked them to do more.
What is it that we think, with the damage that's been done from the removal of those trees to the rear? What is it that the department thinks can be done so that we can help restore the situation?
There's a lot of things that can be done, but I am not spending staff time to designing this. I will, I, there are many landscape architects that are out there, and I would suffice that there have been several recent examples of where buffers have had to be restored. We talked about Insignia, for example, that was later discussed here. The board may want to take a look at what was done in Insignia for a similar violation, and what they had to do for theirs.
And maybe the applicant can do that.
Can we fix this? I mean, we're getting, I hate to say it, but the summer's almost over, and we're getting into fall and then winter. Can this be fixed, like immediately?
I would request that if the applicant's of a mind to submit a plan for us, I would be willing to have the staff walking around to the board members to see that it meets your satisfaction. But.
I'm satisfied if you think, see, I'm not a landscape guy. If you think that these homeowners will be protected, that will be enough for me. So it's more that to your satisfaction. I don't know if particular trees will work or they won't. That's, you know, should be your expertise.
I will, I'll be happy to review that and make a recommendation to this particular board. I'll be happy to do that. But I think this is a matter before you, before this board, and you have to, I'm not going to take away your decision-making. I'll be happy to provide, if the applicant's willing to submit a supplemental plan, I will have, prepared by an appropriate landscape architect or landscape designer. That'll be sufficient. I will have my staff, as well as DEW review. They have tree specialists in Department of Environment and Waterways. If we think that that will provide some cover. I will mention this. When you plant buffers, there always are going to be, for the first year, some sacrifice. You don't get it the first year. It just doesn't happen.
But we're looking for a long-term plan.
Well, I would say that.
And I agree with that. I'm not a landscape expert either, but I'm looking to you for guidance. And if you're saying that they should go to Insignia.
What I'm looking for basically is vertical planting in where they planted the lawn.
Before we get to that.
Right, and that elevation where the lawn is should be raised up three or four feet.
Before we get to that.
Because right now, the lawn is lower.
Before we get to that, the violations are still pending?
That's correct.
How many violations were they issued? How many summonses, do you know, or how many charges?
I think it's one violation for the tree preservation, for cutting down four or five trees.
And, and just want to make sure I understood you, is that what was submitted by the applicant was something that was submitted in connection with working out a disposition of the violation, not what we requested.
That's correct.
All right. So the.
That came from the town attorney's office.
The proposed, well, I want to ask you, the proposed tree, I think it was tree planting plan that we asked to be given to us on May 21st of this year, have you received that?
No.
Can I speak to that?
Yes, please.
In my correspondence with Mr. De Nocolo, and I believe he can verify this, he has indicated to me that the plan that you see on the screen here that you have in front of you, that was submitted as part of the tree violation, was what he intended to show the planning board.
That was it? In other words, what you got is what you're getting?
Is that correct?
That is correct. When we did the, when we did the landscape design, Mr. Chairman, not only were we taking into consideration the violation, but we were taking into consideration the direction of the planning board of May 21. And that's why it was, and we had a limited period of time, I think 30 days within which to submit it. And it was submitted, and I believe approved by June 6th. The purpose was to cover both, why separate planting plans.
Apparently saying that what was submitted is not sufficient, in his opinion.
Well, then, then they're.
Now, one other thing, since the issue has been raised, and I think you've raised it, Mr. De Nocolo, about other applications and something with the 21st century.
Well, only.
Is it not, is it not, is it true that in considering a zone change from the, you know, from the planning perspective, is one of the factors that planning boards are instructed or encouraged to consider? And I understand it's just one, is, does the community require what is intended to go there that the zone change is needed for?
What, if I understand what direction is, in the beginning of the chapter, it states that what the goals and objectives of a zoning applicant, zoning is supposed to do, and one of them is supposed to be the compatibility with the surrounding neighborhood.
No, no. What I'm saying is, in considering a zone change, is one of the factors that the planning boards are encouraged to look at, is in changing zoning, are we changing? the planning boards are encouraged to look at, is, in changing zoning, are we changing zoning to put something there that the community needs?
Oh, yes, sufficiency of, of facilities is, is definitely one of the objectives. In other words-
Okay, and, and the issue has been raised about other, other applications or other types of these facilities. In that area, has anybody on your staff gone around to see, like, say, within a mile, a mile and a half, how many convenience stores or delicatessens, which are basically the same thing, we have there already?
Short answer is no. What we looked at here was that, what our judgment was in terms of this, was that you had, if you look at a zoning map, and you should have a zoning map as attached to that, the area was checkerboarded with a lot of commercial zoning, this, we viewed this as the entire area should be viewed as a commercial, as a retail area. And based upon that, we felt that this was, this site should have been, was eligible to be rezoned, provided that, you know, and we put this in our memo, that sufficient buffers could be maintained to the adjacent residents. Whether or not there is an exit, I, I don't believe that, given the size of this particular commercial area, you're going to end up with some very big numbers as to what's in this area, what you're asking for, and I'm not sure that, given the size of this, we were able to say whether there's a saturation or not, or too many, because-
Well, I don't think it's a question of too many, the question is, I think the standard that we're supposed to be using is, is there a need for more? And I understand that's just one of the standards we're supposed to look at. So, it's not necessarily, is it saturated now, but is there a need for more?
Well, I, I can't answer with the convenience sale stores, but I would agree with Gene on one aspect, and that is, the only, we do have a need for gas stations, and we-
But we have a gas station there now.
But it's closed, it was, it was closed, now it's open.
Right now, it's open.
Yes, but, well, I believe-
So, if this, if this application was denied, he'd still be able to run his gas station there.
But I think what he, I, if I, I'm not going to put words in his mouth, but I believe what the applicant's attorney would argue is that it would not be economically viable in the long run. That's what his basis of his decision, of why they're going for convenience sale stores.
Right, well-
That's his argument.
But I think, I think we're getting a little astray here. Can we get back to the issue of what it is you can accomplish that solves the problem?
Immediately.
That's right, and I agree with, with Mr. Asher, and I'd like to see this done in the shorter term. If, if you want to use Insignia, I'm sure you know the facility, as an example of the kind of thing that had to be corrected, and how they corrected it, possibly at a subsequent time, you can speak to Mr. Derubias, he can give you a couple of other examples, you need to do something, if this board is going to approve what you want, you need to do something to buffer those residents, because you've gone beyond what we anticipated.
Mr. Demont, to answer your question, when we submitted the landscape plan, it was, in my mind, to address two things, the violation and the direction of the planning board. When I deal, when I, when I submit something, quote, to the planning board, I always submit it to the planning department, I don't submit it to the planning board.
But we're beyond that.
But let's fix it, let's fix it.
Right, we're beyond that.
Now, what we will do, what we will do, if the planning board is not satisfied with that landscape plan based on the determination or recommendation of the planning director, then we will plant more trees, we will give them another plant, and we will plant, if you want 14-foot trees, we'll put 14-foot trees in. But, we, getting to Mr. Derubias' statement that he had submitted a sketch, that doesn't work. I appreciate their efforts, but when you're designing a service station, and a facility for ingress, egress, access, and safety onsite, and ease of onsite and off-site traffic movements, you're talking about cars coming on and off your site, a site has to be properly designed, and I respectfully submit that this is the proper design. Now, if you want more trees, higher trees, we will do it. I will contact the planning department, tell me if you have a landscape architect, or we will provide, we have, we have a landscape architect-
I think they're telling you they want you to get your own.
If they want, I'm sorry, um-
They, they want you to get your own.
Okay.
So, I have a, I have a question.
Can we have a proposal by the next meeting, which is in mid-September?
Absolutely.
I just have a question, though, I would like to know, before we get to the next proposal, and, maybe I'm missing something, we were supposed, we were supposed, the planning board was supposed to get a proposal as of May 21st.
That's correct.
We still don't have it, the planning board, they still not have that.
That's correct.
Can you explain why that is?
Well, at the time, we felt that the plan, plan was insufficient for the screening purposes, and we asked the applicant to submit that, and we had felt that it was not going, and we had some discussions with individual board members who had seen what was existing there right now, and I've made the conclusion, and maybe incorrectly, that the board was not happy with what was there, and so therefore, it was irrelevant to submit the plan because you weren't happy, you could see, physically see what was there. That was my judgment.
I would agree with that, I, Mr. De Nocolo, you know, in all fairness, you're saying you submitted, and I don't dispute that, but I, I've driven by, I don't think the screening is adequate. I'm not comfortable, with all due respect, I'm not comfortable ruling on this, or passing judgment on this, until you satisfy them, which will satisfy us-
We certainly will.
Which will protect these people back there, and then we can move forward.
Right, so, so just so I, just so we can be clear, Mr. Derubias, you're saying that the proposal that was submitted to you, you reviewed it, and you felt that it was deficient to the extent that it shouldn't even be given to the board, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay.
I made a judgment.
I just want to know why, why we asked for it on May 21st, and it's August 13th, and we haven't seen it yet, and now you've just explained it to me.
Okay, but I think there's an important issue that I want the board to emphasize. What the applicant is requesting here is with something that the planning department has not proposed, you know, agreed to from the beginning, which was to place a building within the required buffer area. That's what the applicant is asking for here, and I'm still opposed to that.
You've never agreed to that.
But let, let's fix the major problem.
Well, no, but he, that's what he was saying right now, was he was talking about landscaping it around the building.
We'll rule on the application, but there's a major problem that needs to be fixed.
Okay.
And they can fix it, they're willing to fix it, and, okay, we should fix it.
Well, I think what Mr. Derubias is saying, notwithstanding that, his proposal involves a building in the screening area, and Mr. Derubias doesn't agree with that.
No, but let's resolve the screening question, and then we'll see where they want to put this building, and whether we agree or not, but at the very least, the buffer has to be restored or replaced or somehow corrected for those homeowners.
But how do we, how do we resolve that, if we still need, if we, if we, we don't want the building in the buffer, how can we resolve it? Because then we're going to see a plan where the landscaping cannot be adequate enough because there's going to be a building there, so that's like a catch-22, and how do we do that?
Right, it's like going around in circles, I think.
How do we do that?
But the building is sound attenuation, and the building will protect those homeowners from any noise from the traffic on general turnpike.
We understand that, but what we're saying is that Mr. Derubias, his position, and we've been, we've heard that Mr. Derubias' recommendations do carry some weight amongst this board, that his position now is that the building should not be where you want to put it, and I think it's been raised that, that if that is still an issue, then we could, we could address the screening issue all we want, but we still have this other issue that you're not in agreement with.
Just bring that, bring that building in where it belongs, put the buffer behind it, make it adequate, and, and you have, you have it.
We'll do two steps. One, we will produce a landscape plan for review by this board, which I normally submit to the planning staff. Do I still do that, or do I bring it to your office, Mr. Erhart?
You can submit it to the planning staff-
That's what I did the first time.
With some type of a cover letter that says, that says, "This is my proposal that I'm submitting pursuant to the request of the planning board at the August 13th hearing." So, now, everybody, everybody understands what's being submitted and why. How about that?
I will, I will make the letter so specific, it'll be like reading a comic book.
Well, and maybe you can just put an air to cover yourself, please, forward this on to the members of the planning board.
You know, Mr. Chairman, normally, we work through the planning staff. Planning staff notifies the planning board. That's the way I've done it in this town for 40 years, okay? Since Mr. Derubias started, and by the way, good health and retirement, it's been nice working with you, thank God.
But you see, by the time this all comes about, Mr. Derubias is going to be long, may be long gone, so you might want to, not rely on past procedures, you want to, you want to be specific for yourself.
Mr. Erhart, his spirit will always be here.
So, maybe a couple of trees in memoriam behind the building, but let's get, let's get the trees going, okay?
We're going to put his name on a couple of trees. But, to get, to get back to the issue, we will submit a landscape plan with much taller trees, we will try to address the building issue, but let's take one step at a time. Let's first see if you're satisfied with the landscaping. If I can satisfy you there, then maybe we can take the second step, if the board is willing to, to do that.
If you bring the building back and, and have that great buffer, and you make the community happy, then you'll make us happy.
I will, I will make every effort, Mr. Zor, to do that, okay?
And raise the elevation where the grass is, so the trees are planted at a higher level.
Yeah, well, when we plant, yeah, I will have to, we'll have to do that, because that was a little bit of a swell to hold water, too.
Well, perhaps, between now and the time it comes back, between now and the time it comes back, any members of the board who wish to can speak to Mr. Derubias about some of these suggestions, so that when you speak to him, they can be communicated to you, and you can try to address them as best you can.
Possibly Mr. Waller can email us, as he does so effectively, when the plan comes in, we'll be able to look at it in advance, and at least we'll have an opportunity to ensure.
We'll, we'll get some, I think we should be able to get something to Mr. Derubias before August 29. Is that possible? Yes, so, at least he'll have, we certainly want him to go out in style.
Don't do it on August 28th.
No, not on 28th. We'll do it, we'll do it quickly, and, and then, and we'll try to-
So, I can work on the weekend.
But I will be very specific that I am submitting it to the planning staff for purposes of delivery to the planning board.
I would do that, because, like I said, you may not be dealing with Mr. Derubias, you may, you may not, so, you may want to cover yourself with that.
Who else should I address, then?
Just address it to the, to the, to the planning board, care of planning department.
Okay, I'll do that, Mr. Erhart.
Is that okay with you, Frank?
You get it to these guys, and don't get it to these guys, and it's good.
All right, so, then, the night is getting late, I think we may have a neighbor here.
Yes, I want to see if there's anybody else who wishes to be heard on this.
We will proceed based on Mr. Chairman's suggestion and Mr. Derubias' suggestion.
It will, okay, anybody else present who wishes to be heard on this? You were right, Mr. De Nocolo, we do have somebody here. Please come on up, give your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Diane Hanley, I live at 2 Johnson Street, I am the house just north of this gas station.
Which house are you, the middle house, the house furthest to the west, or the house furthest to the east?
Furthest to the west.
Furthest to the west. And the house that receives all the light from the new lampposts that were installed. There's five new lampposts that were installed, other than the 16 lights on the canopy, so basically, we have light in our backyard all night long. The noise issue, yes, there are 2,000 cars that pass by, we have eight lanes of traffic that go by. We have car radios that go off at 2:30 in the morning. It's been a pretty cool summer, I have to keep my AC on all the time because my children can't open up the windows. It's no longer a buffer zone, as far as hurricane sandy and damaged trees, absolutely not true. That's a bold-faced lie.
Could you please address the board, ma'am?
Yeah, please do. The trees were not damaged at all, it was a great buffer zone. We've lived there for 16 years, up until this last year, even the previous gas station that was open the first three years we lived there, we didn't have this many problems. This has become a nightmare. The shrubs that they planted are not adequate buffer, it's done for aesthetics, it's not done to buffer the residents from any noise, pollution, we have gas trucks that back up, beeping there, truck backup sounds or whatever, all night long. I have pictures to show you if I could submit them. Can I bring these over to the board?
Sure.
You have to have the microphone if you're going to speak.
You can take it out of there if you want.
That's fine.
Do you want to hand out pictures up, that's all, fine. If you're going to speak, you have to go back to the microphone. If you want to hand out the pictures, just hand out the pictures, because we're taking, a record is being made.
That's the backyard picture.
Do you want to label them, Jim?
They're labeled there.
He hasn't labeled.
There's another backyard picture.
Well, I'm just going to mark, mark them as you go along.
The dates are on them.
Right, I'm just going to mark them, the first one, you said backyard picture, that's going to be number one, the second backyard picture is going to be number two.
This is from my back door.
Third picture from the back door is going to be number three.
This is my kitchen window.
Kitchen window picture is going to be number four.
And then, these are the 10-foot trees that they put in that were supposed to be filled in, and this is the big buffer. We got about six of these 10-foot trees that were supposed to replace 40-foot trees that were taken down. Maple trees that were nice, big and full, I don't know if they showed you winter pitches or whatever, but those are the, the trees there.
The first picture of the trees will be number, I think we're up to five?
Yeah.
Yes, number five.
This is my house in the back here, which you can clearly see, and they planted, these are about four to five-foot little evergreens, and then they planted about, these are the 10-foot trees, they planted those.
All right, so this is, it shows some of the new plantings, that'll be number six?
The new plantings. That's one of their, their trees that they consider great screening and buffer.
All right, this will be number seven.
And the wooded area-
This is one of the new trees, number seven.
The wooded area that is no longer there, it's now putting green, so that looks great behind the house. We now have sprinklers going off at all times.
All right, so we're going to put the grass area, number eight.
And here's their trees that, you know, we had trees that were there for 40 years, 16 years, we never had any trees come down in that buffer zone. They were all living, they were all healthy, they were all vibrant trees, and now the trees, one month later after they planted them, they're all dying.
All right, these are, would be number nine, I think.
And now we're adding-
Wait, hang on a second.
Sorry.
This is number nine, and it's, we'll say unhealthy trees. That's what, that's what they're claimed to be.
And now they're adding more sprinklers closer to our property line, I guess for the dying trees. So, there's now about 10 different sprinkler lines going through the property.
Number 10 will be pictures of workmen-
Sprinkler installation.
A picture of workmen installing sprinklers, just so we can describe them all, 1 through 10, submitted by the, by the, by the resident.
The buffer zone is no longer a buffer zone, it is just, I guess, supposed to be a beautification of a gas station, and it seems that, you know what, we have plenty of gas stations, and now the zoning for a convenience store, you know, in one square mile there, there's three Hess', there's two 7-Elevens', there's a Quick Stop', there's Pilot'. Our buffer zone was terrific, we never heard anything, you didn't hear Jericho, you didn't hear anything. Now, it's absolutely pathetic. So, I want all this to be taken into consideration, and I'm just curious as to see what the board is going to do. More trees, I don't know if that's the answer, you know, a retaining wall with fences, or just build a whole retaining wall for the residents, because what they've done is not adequate at all.
Well, to answer your question, this board is not going to vote on this tonight, you've heard the discussion, there's going to be some more discussions between the applicant and the planning department, there's supposed to be a proposal, it's going to be submitted to the planning board via the planning department, and after all of those, additional proposals are submitted and reviewed, at some point in the future, this matter will come back before us, and we'll continue the hearing, and- And either then, possibly, or perhaps if other issues come up after that, the board will make a determination, our determination, on our recommendation on this application. But it's not going to be tonight.
Can the board do anything in the time being now for the additional five lampposts?
When you said, you mean five lampposts that were put up?
Yes.
I think we should see that.
I'm going to take a look, or have, we're supposed to have lighting screened and shielded and faced away from the residents. And I was, my site inspectors did that, and they said it was. But I could see from the photographs, there's some spillage of light. So I'm going to have that checked.
Okay, so ma'am, the issue of the light in the lamppost is going to be looked into by the planning department. And I'm sure that when this matter comes back before the board, after all these other issues are addressed and discussed between them, they'll have some information for us on that, too.
And when this is all going to be, will we be notified again? We weren't notified now. I had submitted an email to a board member, and then we were told that this was on the agenda for tonight at that time. Other than that, we're never told when it's on the agenda. It's kind of.
Well, legally, if I could, once it's put on the board's agenda, as you could see on our agenda, it's on here till the board finishes it. So you could check with my office at any given time, and we could tell you whether it's going to be discussed that particular evening. But once it's on the agenda, and it's already been noticed, we don't do it again unless there's an unusual circumstance. But you're welcome to call the office. There are phone numbers at the bottom before each meeting. And either Alex or the clerk to the board, which is Agnes Vion, will tell you if it's going to be discussed that evening.
And ma'am, just so you know, you don't have to call up every day. We have a meeting in September, which is going to be, what, the 16th, I think? The 17th, okay? Then after that, starting in October, we go back to our regular schedule, which is the first and third Wednesday of each month. So September 17th is the next meeting, then the first Wednesday in October, then the second Wednesday in October, and so on. So that way, you don't have to call up every day. You have to just call up a couple of days before each of these other dates to find out whether this matter is going to be cal counted for that night.
Okay, one last question. We had submitted a petition regarding the zone change. Is that still in?
Okay, the matter was referred to, what we're talking about for the board, some of the new members of the board that may not be aware. When a zone change petition is submitted, under New York state law, if a percentage of the owners object to it, usually it's 20% of the adjacent owners, and there's a method of calculating that. It is determined by the town attorney as to whether or not there's a supermajority required. Petition was submitted, the town attorney has ruled that there is a supermajority required, which means that in order for this zone change to go through, there are four votes needed by the town board, not three.
Right. So, but that doesn't affect us?
No, it does not.
So, ma'am, the way that this works really is that we are going to vote on it at some point and make a recommendation to the town board, okay? As to what we think should be done on this application, granted or denied. The ultimate decision rests with the town board. And I think what Mr. Derubias just said is the petition has been received, and it's been determined that when it goes before the town board, because of the petition, it has to have four votes out of five to be approved, not three.
Okay. So that petition is still going to come into effect? That's what I was asking.
Won't be before us, it'll be before the town board, who has the final resolution, have the final say.
Okay, that's all I have to say for tonight.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Joseph Hanley. I reside at Two Johnson. That was my wife. I won't belabor the issue. I know it's late. I just wanted to point out that all these issues with just a simple gas station, it seems indicative of the way Bull operates. And you know what? The convenience store, I mean, already just with the refuse generated from the filling station, twice while barbecuing, rodents have been running along my fence line inside. So I can only imagine the refuse generated by a convenience store 24 hours would might prevail. So just food for thought. Thank you.
Were there rodents there? Did you notice, have a problem with rodents there before the gas station opened up?
Yeah.
No.
And earlier on the March 19th, I was here as well, and the attorney had mentioned, when I had asked if it was a 25-hour operation, that the dumpster be situated out front. The attorney had situated right beside the vacant building and stuff. And, you know, if it's worth anything, the berm created at their property line, if a six-foot PVC fence could be put there as a suggestion, that would be more than adequate for screening is to go that way. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Anybody else wishes to be heard in this matter? No? Then motion, please. Yes, sir.
If there's been a protest petition submitted, I had written to Mr. Derubias for a copy of it, because it has to be verified, and it's subject to attack. So I would ask that Mr. Derubias send it to my office with the determination by the town engineer that it meets the percentage.
Well, to address that, you take that up with Mr. Derubias.
I would put that in writing.
Put it in writing and address it to Mr. Derubias. If it's really not something that comes before us, that issue, and it affects the way we handle it, it affects what happens when it goes to the town board. So please.
I did put it in writing. I will do it again.
Please follow up with Mr. Derubias, and I'm sure he'll respond appropriately. As long as you mail the letter out, and it gets it before April 29, August 29.
Shouldn't he go to the town attorney, if the town attorney is the one who ruled on it?
The town attorney is, I would recommend that you contact the town attorney because they make the determination. We do, we make an assessment, and then they make the determination. So the request should go before them.
And the last protest petition came from your office, Mr. Derubias. Thank you very much.
No, that went to the town attorney as well. We did the assessment, we sent it to the town. We do the calculations, the town attorney reviews it. The determination is made by the town attorney. They made the.
Did you say who made the determination? Who sent it to my office?
Mr. DeNacola, maybe just make the request of both, and maybe you'll get a response. I'm sure you will. Maybe you can get two responses.
This is put over to what, Mr. Chairman?
I don't think we have a set date. Our next meeting is September 17th. The meeting after that is the first Wednesday in October. We're not adjourning it to any specific date.
Okay.
Everything that has to be done, that we've discussed, is done, and then it'll be recalculated.
Very good. So an open date, then?
Yes. Date could be determined.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, members of the board, for your time.
Would you say that the board clarified, the planting plan that they're directing the applicant to provide is going to depict the proposal with the rezoning in the proposed building? Is that my understanding? That's what the board is looking for?
It's going to, I'm sorry, what's that?
Is that plan going to depict the proposed convenience store? That's the subject of the rezoning petition?
Well, it should, yeah. It should give us, it should give us how it's going to be proposed to look if it's granted, I would think.
But not within the planting easement, because we haven't made that determination yet. So I think Member Disorbs suggested provide that planting plan, but with the building where it's supposed to be at this time. We'll talk about other issues at a later time. And I think Member Ashwin and I suggested it just be done expeditiously. So if we're not adjourning it to the 17th, let's not take that as an invitation to have these people put up with this for that much longer. Let's move quickly.
We want to move quickly as well, Mr. Derubias.
I just want to clarify something. You're telling him to put the proposal with the building where it is now, and not where the planning department wants it?
No, where the planning department wants it.
Oh, okay.
Not where they're suggesting it later on may end up. Let them adhere to the plan as it exists now.
They could place it anywhere on the site as long as it's not in the buffer.
Right, right.
Correct, that's what I'm going to.
It's up to them where they plant it, where they put it on the proposal.
Right.
And it's up to you whether or not you would approve it.
Yes.
So let's leave it up to them as to where they want to put it on their drawings.
I'm simply saying not within the buffer, because we haven't approved it to be within the buffer.
Right.
They could put it wherever they want, and they could submit it to the planning department with the proposed building wherever they want to put it. It's up to them where they want to put it.
Well, I think it would make it.
I'm not going to tell them where they want to put it.
But I think it would make it better for us, because then I can see the real buffer zone.
Yeah, but what you're asking for is not the same thing as what he's asking for. It's two different things.
I think we're asking for the same thing.
No, you're not.
Mr. Chairman, I think I understand what everyone wants, and I will address everyone's concerns.
As long as you understand.
I do.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Have a good night.
Thank you for all your patience.
Okay, have a motion, please.
In a matter of zone change petition number 2013-06, all of Long Island Operating Corporation, I move that we adjourn until all further information that we requested is presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none, so adjourn. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, the next item on the agenda, under Part 3, Item 20, is the signing of the map for Southern Boulevard Industrial Park, which I believe you took care of. The item after that, Item 21, is the adoption of the minutes for the June 4, 2014, meeting.
Motion on that, please.
Motion to adopt the June 24 minutes.
Second.
The June 4 minutes. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none, so adopted.
Item 22 was taken care of earlier, which gives us, Item 23 is the save the date for the Suffolk County Planning Federation on October 21st, which I have in correspondence.
For the planning seminar? Okay. So you've given us that. I think we've been notified of this planning conference, the Fall Planning Conference.
Right, and you have it in correspondence.
I would just mention, for the board's consideration, the county is now charging for these. We will take care of the expense, because I have a budget lying for it. But if the board lets us know, so we have to send a, now have to send a voucher. I can't do last-minute registrations on these anymore.
So you want to know in advance who's going?
Yes.
If we can't make this one, when's the next one?
Well, what I'll do is if you can't make that one, there are other ones being given in Nassau County and others. Did you attend the one in the spring?
I've only gone to the Upton one. I've never gone to Nassau County.
Okay. The next one will be given, there are two given in Suffolk County, one in the spring, one in the fall. The one in the spring is usually on the east end. And Nassau County has them on alternate dates. And if you can't make that one, I'll ask that Alex research it and find you which ones are out there that you could attend. They also have them in Westchester as well.
Okay. Another motion, please?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, hopefully none, and we are adjourned for the evening.